Village of Rhinebeck. I call the Village of Rhinebeck Planning Board October 5, 2021 to order. First item on the agenda is the continuation of the public hearing for new garage at 178 East Market Street.
Good evening.
Good evening, Michael.
How are you?
Good.
So I think Lisa is going to get on.
She's there.
Oh, is she? Oh, good. Okay. So let me report where we are since our last hearing. We met with Dave from Dave's Tree Service, an arborist, to go over the trees in between, well, on the east side of the Buck Bear property line. The biggest problem with the existing hemlocks is the large black walnut limbs from the neighbor's tree that hang over and literally are touching the tops of the hemlocks. He suggested and the neighbors have agreed to have that branch and maybe several others removed. It's a very large walnut tree and I don't know how many of you know, but being residents of Rhinebeck, you probably know how difficult it is to get anything to grow under a walnut tree. So they're in favor of that. I met with the neighbor, reviewed Ralph, who was at the last meeting, reviewed possible options as to what we might do. Ultimately, both Ralph and Lisa would prefer to leave the hemlocks there and just monitor them and take, trim the branches that need to come off on Lisa's side in order to erect the structure and hopefully with the walnut tree limb removed, it will give more light for the hemlocks to continue to grow and create more of a visible barrier between Ralph and Lisa's property. In addition, they will fertilize the hemlocks to get them to grow more healthy, which Ralph has done several times over the past several years. Let's see, in addition, with their request on the east side of the barn now, we have very small windows that will match the existing west side windows of the barn. There's about five or six of them. We'll reuse what we can and make new ones in the same size. We've also, in an effort to pull the building further away from the property line, we've decreased the width of the garage where the three garage doors are by one foot two, thereby having a 33 foot 10 inch length to the face of the garage as opposed to a 35 feet. So we're now 11 feet, seven inches off the property line with the edge of the garage. I've provided a new site plan showing the existing retaining wall that's on the property line, the row, I think their name is Ralph's property, the existing hemlock trees that exist and the fence that's there. In addition, we've spoken to an engineer who has a plan with resolving the conflict with the floodplain issue. He's come up with a solution and we have a meeting with the code enforcement officer this Thursday to review that with him and hopefully get his approval. So we've gotten a lot done in the last two weeks.
Is anyone else here for the public hearing? Or you can raise your hand, wave or hit the reactions and wave your hand there. Ryan will turn your microphone, let you speak. Before we go any further, we need to make a motion to close the public hearing if we've had all the comments we're going to have.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
I will second that, Michael Gee.
Okay, you have to state your name each time now. All those in favor?
Aye.
One at a time.
Jeff says aye.
Mike says aye.
Suzanne says aye.
John says aye.
David Miller says aye. That's for the record, it's quieted by state law, the Zoom meetings. Okay, so now we're into site plan. So if, are we, what's happening with the floodplain? Have you designed, are you aware of it or we have to wait for you to meet with Ken to go with the floodplain specifications for what the back of the barn has to have as protection against the flood?
So my understanding, after speaking with Rod Morrison from the LRC group, it's kind of a cut and fill scenario where because we're filling a certain amount of area within the floodplain, we have to cut comparable amount of area out of the soil behind the barn to provide the space that the barn is now taking up for the floodwaters that would come onto the property. I've seen what he's come up with. It's about a 30 foot by 10 foot wide excavation. I think it's about six inches deep and it will happen kind of just past the barn. But the idea is, you know, we're displacing the water by building the barn. We need a place for that water that would have been in the barn location in a hole on the property. And Rod says that this is kind of a standard procedure for situations such as this and we'll review with the code enforcement officer Thursday and hopefully he'll sign off on it and we'll be good to go.
Well, Ryan, I don't know if anyone has seen the revised, revised, revised plans. Can anyone display them for the board to look at?
Michael, you're gonna have to display them because I think in the confusion of going back to Zoom, I don't think, because you had dropped off hard copies to the office, I don't think an electronic copy was admitted. So if you can share your screen, that would be great.
All right, just bear with me. Would you like to see the site plan first?
Whatever you have, you can quickly go through whatever changes you may be. We've all seen the site plan multiple times. We just want to see, you said you shortened the garage by a few feet.
Oh, yeah.
Some kind of trench in the back of the garage. I don't know if you put the hemlocks or the trees on it. Whatever changes you make is the last one. Just show us those pages. Everyone can see them.
Are you all seeing them?
Yeah.
Okay, so here's the site plan. So as you can see, we now have the retaining, stone retaining wall on Ralph's property that's right on the edge of the property line. Then we have the row of hemlocks that come along the property line. And there's about a foot to 18 inch grade change between the top of the retaining wall and the base of the hemlocks. Essentially, it's, which is equal to the elevation of the whole driveway area here. And then this dark black line indicates the existing fence that Lisa and Hal built a number of years ago as a privacy fence. The new length of the garage along this face has been reduced from 35 feet to 33 feet 10 inches. I'll move it away from the neighbor's property. I don't think we really can get it any narrower without starting to really compromise the ability to get cars parked easily and getting through a garage door. So I think we're kind of at our minimum.
Where would the trench be to?
So what the proposal is to build this trench out here, obviously. And it can be within the patio area, you know, we can, we can have a recess actually in the patio area. There's nothing about perk or anything like that. It just has to have an area that, as I say, that it's kind of a cut and fill, if you're familiar with that expression, where we're filling here and we're cutting here so that it's an equal, it's an equal swap.
Like gravel or something that'd be permanent?
I specifically asked him, he said, no, it doesn't matter what it's made out of now. If we're gonna do a bluestone patio, we're gonna probably put it on a p-stone bill anyway. So that'll allow for quite a bit of perk, but it's just, it's kind of just a reserve so that as it floods, that water that would have gone up here has a place to go in this location.
Can you give us the first floor elevation of the garage so that we can compare it with the floodplain map? Or you should at least have that for the Thursday meeting, I would assume, so that?
Yeah, and we do.
Okay.
Basically, the first floor elevation is going to match the pool deck here. And that's very explicit on his drawing. I can pull that up if that's something you want to see.
I just wanted to make sure you had it for Thursday because that's gonna be, because the flood elevation maps have the flood elevation, so you have to compare that with the first floor elevation.
Okay, correct. I'm sorry.
Any other board members have questions or comments on this?
Can you explain how the drainage off the roof of that building is gonna work? I see you have a catch basin listed there now.
So that's the existing catch basin and, you know, we're gonna, the water is basically gonna flow to the driveway and we will, because we're going to be lifting this up, we will, and we'll have Rod do this, pitch all the blacktop area to come into that existing catch basin. That catch basin was put in during the driveway and pool construction and it has a pipe that goes out to daylight somewhere by the Landman Kill. So all this can be pitched to that existing catch basin.
And remind us how high the hemlocks and the fence are.
The fence is six feet, the hemlocks are roughly 15 to 16 feet. This is a very large, fully grown maple tree. I don't know how tall they get, but it's big. And then the hemlock, I'm sorry, the walnut, which is actually on the neighbor's, mostly on the neighbor's property is about here and it's enormous. You know, the trunk that's coming out over these hemlocks here, probably at the, where it leaves the tree, it's probably 14 inches in diameter. Just to give you an idea of how the scale of that tree, that's just one of the branches. So as I said, we're on the east elevation facing the neighbors. We're going to match the existing west side. There's two windows on the west side that we will reuse in the garage and then do that same side of the window for the west side so that it really reduces the amount of light that might get over through the trees into the neighbor's property. I mean, this, this area right here is all garage, lights won't be on very often and this is kind of pool equipment and storage, so lights will be even less frequently on.
What about the upper story windows, which are probably the more concerning?
Those are about six and a half feet off the floor elevation. So they're quite high. This is the area of the golf simulator, which actually, Lisa, maybe you can pipe in, as I recall, you need to have this in a dark environment in order to see the screen, I believe?
Yeah, yeah, you know, it would be on that side and it is, it's, the windows would be shaded so that, you know, you could actually see the screen of the golf simulator.
What do the windows look like now that are facing the neighbor? There are many windows on the other three sides of the building.
Michael, do you have that layout?
I'm gonna see if I have any pictures. Actually, I'm, I'm not sure that there are any windows facing the neighbors.
That's what we had a pre-meet, that's what we put a poker for because there are many, many windows. Four on the front, four or five on the other side, just some more facing the kill, you know, and whether there'd be need for many windows on that on the neighbor's side. That'd be the last question or comment that we had about it.
I'm trying to go through my win, my.
So, Ryan, I guess we can't finalize this until we get something from Ken.
That would have to be a decision for the board. It all depends, you can make it a condition or it is, it is up to the board and how the membership feels based on what's been presented tonight. It is up to you five.
We've had many meetings on this. I think all of our questions have been asked.
Yeah, the only two things I think are left are seeing the east side elevations, to know what the windows look like on that side.
Currently?
And getting an approval from the zoning enforcement officer for the floodplain permit. But that's a pretty important step. I don't know if we would want to finalize our vote because they would have to come back and, not existing, I'm talking about proposed.
Oh, well, they're right here. And these are 20, 21 inches high and 25 inches wide, so they're quite small.
We're not seeing those windows.
Sorry. Let's see, for some reason, it's not like. How about now? There we go.
Next.
And the floor plan, except that the width of the structure was diminished a foot two inches. The floor plan is pretty much the same with the back being completely, on the second floor being completely open to the main floor beneath.
Correct.
And that window, if you could just go back to the elevation again, with the windows facing the row residence.
Every time I change screen.
Yeah, you might have to stop share and start share each time. So I see in the peak of the elevation, the two upper windows, which are in the golf simulator room and you say they're about six and a half, the bottom of the window is about six and a half feet above the floor to begin with.
Correct.
That other window to the left of that with the little 1-0, yes.
So that's, that's in the stairwell?
Okay, all right. So that's not in a area that people will be standing or sitting in and looking down on the row residence?
Not at all.
Yeah, a couple of things. John mentioned most of them. The drainage, from my notes, the concerns that Mr. Rowe made in the last meeting. The, one of them was the privacy in the windows, which I think you've addressed. One of them that was important was the drainage, which John asked about. And you said that what you'll do is the drainage will be pitched to the catch basin. So can you clarify that? That means that when you resurface the parking area and any of them academy or whatever leading to the garage, that will be pitched. And any leaders that come off of the roof, is there any, are there any gutters and leaders coming off that roof that would be pouring water on the side of the structure?
Well, on the, so we certainly could put the leaders here to come down and get into that catch basin.
Yeah, what I'm talking about is the elevation facing the row residence. There's a lot of roof surface there bringing a lot of water down off the side of that building towards the row residence.
Correct.
That drainage being accommodated.
Well, we can certainly put a gutter here and a leader down here that would actually end up going towards the depression that we're creating for the stormwater.
I think that may, I suspect Mr. Rowe can speak for himself. I see he's in the, in the meeting, but that may be one concern because that's a lot of roof area pouring water towards the row property. Another comment Mr. Rowe made was the outdoor lighting to ensure that it's all downward pointing and not spreading out.
Yes.
Go ahead.
We've agreed to do that. I don't know that we're necessarily, I'm not a proponent of dark sky lights. If the board's gonna say that's what we have to do, I find with dark sky lights, in order to see any light at all, you have to multiply the number of lights around the perimeter by double. Because they're, they just don't spread much light because they're like a recessed can. Whereas if we can have a heavily shaded globe, it will still do most of the light downward, but we're actually able to see that the light is on and it will shed some light horizontally out, so. But that's, that's what I would refer. I mean, I've, I've, I've put these in projects in the past and the clients have been really upset because they can't tell if the lights are on or off with the dark sky fixtures.
We have a lighting section in the code that says, let's come from a full cutoff fixture or is fully shielded to avoid glare and allow no light to be emitted above the horizontal plane into the night sky. And levels at the property line not to exceed point one foot candle. So that's the sort of, so you will need to shield those lights so that they don't go sideways towards the east and they can't go above the horizontal plane. That doesn't mean you can't get spread, but you can have it so that it shoots above the horizontal plane.
Of the fixture itself, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that can be easily accomplished.
Well, normally we ask for specifications on lighting, so you should show them on the plans. So we know where they are and what they look like so that we can be assured that what you're gonna do is, is meets the code. And also I think you should show the leaders on the roof drains and the leaders on the, on the plan so that we can be assured that you're gonna do everything you can to keep any drainage off the neighbor's property because it's so close.
Yes, thanks for that, Sean. I think that would satisfy the needs. Going down my list of the concerns that Rose had, there was the windows for privacy and light. I think that's been addressed. There was the outdoor lighting, which we just talked about. There were the hemlocks, which I think has been addressed working with the neighbor. There was the floodplain issue, which we're still wording on, waiting on. There was the overall drainage. And the other thing that Rose mentioned was their concern that the building would be used as a residence or even a short-term residence. And I believe it was John that pointed out in the last meeting that it could not be used as, let's say, an Airbnb or a short-term rental in case, unless a license was, was gained for that. But in, in the case that it's not being rented, are there any way that we could specify restrictions on people just living there for no rent? In other words, to be sure that this is not an accessory dwelling unit that someone, family member might move into.
Certainly put as a condition that if the property owner wants to do a short-term rental or an accessory apartment, it has to be, come back to the board and be permitted.
Okay, that, that sounds great, Sean. I'd appreciate if we could put that condition.
Village and to be permitted. I can't remember what the, the short-term rental process is. So, you know, you have the right to create an accessory apartment, but they have to come back and have it approved by the board and go through another review process. So as long as we may make sure that that's part of the record, I think we're covered on those two items.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense because that was a concern that the Rose raised and that's all the items I had.
But, you know, if they had somewhere in the building is a fold-out sofa or something, it's Thanksgiving, it's Christmas, family comes and people are going to sleep there, that's not an Airbnb. That's just using the property, some relatives.
We are, we are faced, we are faced with a lot more of these recently. And just, just as an aside, in, in last night's Rhinebeck Town Planning Board meeting, there was an agenda item for someone that wanted to put an accessory building in. And in order to feel comfortable that the people weren't using that, either as a rental or a non-rental unit that someone could live in, they made a condition that the applicant had to remove the kitchenette that they were proposing. Now, I'm not suggesting that we do that here, as long as we have the condition documented that people can't be staying overnight there, whether renting or for free, without coming to the village for approval.
There'll be a bunch of clauses in the final approval like that, like, the lock screen must be maintained, if anything happens, it has to be replaced. But I think, what, I think what we need to do is have them meet Thursday with Ken and get something from him that he's happy with the floodplain, add the gutters, add the catch area for the, you know, the kill, the floodplain and everything. And then I think we've answered all the questions and I'm the 19th, we should be pretty much in the clear. We just have to wait for Ken.
I have one question and David and John, you might know the answer. I'm looking at the windows on three out of the four sides and they seem to be more horizontal than vertical. We're always discussing that with houses. This is, this is a barn. Does that law on the historic district, you know, fall in here?
Generally, yes, although we've allowed horizontal shaped windows to have vertical panes, vertical proportion panes and, and say that that's okay.
Right, because you could say the panes are more vertical, but the windows themselves are more horizontal on a lot of them.
Yeah, as long as the panes themselves are vertical, that's pretty typical in historic buildings.
Yeah.
You know, eyebrow windows that are horizontal and overall proportion, but the panes are vertically portioned. And I think that's okay.
Okay, I just wanted to get that out there. I'm fine with it too.
So I would suggest that we continue this site plan approval to the 19th and if Ken says it's in the clear and Michael gets us all final, final copies with all of the various things that we've talked about are on the plan and no see any reason why we can't have a vote on the 19th.
Is that a motion, Mr. Chair?
A motion to continue this to the 19th pending, you know, Ken's approval, you know, on the floodplain issue.
John second's it.
Okay, all those in favor, we have to make a roll call vote. Jeff Christensen?
Aye.
Michael Gee?
Aye.
Suzanne?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
David, aye. All right, we'll see you on the 19th and hopefully bring this to a close.
Okay. Thank you. Yep.
All right, the second on the item on the agenda is the 118 Montgomery Street, the minor subdivision lot adjustment. We talked about this last time. I think it's relatively simple. The line was drawn straight down the center of the two properties and no one was aware that the water shut-off valve was on the other property. So this is, this is not a public hearing, is it, Ryan?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right, I make a motion to open the public hearing for 118 Montgomery Street. We have a second.
I will second that, Michael Gee.
All those in favor, roll call vote. John Clark?
Aye.
Michael Gee?
Aye.
Suzanne Holzberg?
Aye.
Jeff Christensen?
Aye.
David Miller, aye. Is there anyone here who would like to make a public comment? David Miller, aye. Is there anyone here who would like to make a public comment about this lot line adjustment for 118 Montgomery Street? Raise your hand. Send a chat to Ryan or. Okay.
I don't see any chair.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, the lot line adjustment for 118 Montgomery. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Jeff.
Okay, roll call vote. John.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Suzanne.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
And David says aye. Okay. Do I have any, what have any comments about this lot line adjustment?
No.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the lot line adjustment?
I'm moved, John.
We have a second.
Jeff.
Okay, roll call vote. John.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Suzanne.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
David, aye. It's approved. Good luck. I saw you took down the garage. All right. Good luck. And thank you. The next item, number three on the agenda is AT&amp;T, Mark Fuentes, George Santori, Aerosmith Development. Three fair crossway, Yogi's cell tower, special permit, site plan and area variance, if that's all necessary. Now, we got some input from Ty and Bond and from our legal counsel about this issue. And we're back and forth. We have a lot of correspondence on it, but how would I like to start with, with our, our legal counsel and Ty and Bond or with the applicant?
It seems as though, I'm sorry, it seems to me, Mr. Chair, that the opinion offered by the legal was pretty crisp, clear, straightforward.
It, yeah, I mean, the, the code is, was explained to us last time is 10% of the tower or 20 feet or less, whichever is greater. And they're asking for 15 feet to put the AT&amp;T transmitter on the top of the tower, which is less than 20 feet, which makes it compliant. So I'll ask Emily, what is our, where do we go from here?
Sure. Thanks. And it's, it's nice to meet you. Yeah, exactly. I was just going to say, I'm happy to, happy to be here and working with all of you. So anyway, yeah, you got that right. There are two ways of meeting the, the criteria. Essentially, the federal telecommunications law favors co-location. And so if it's a modest height increase for a location, it's considered eligible facilities request. But the only critique that I had with the applicant's reasoning is that there, the, the two possibilities, as you described, one is 10%, which we know that this doesn't fall within 10%. The other is 20 feet, but it's not a 20-foot increase in the height. It's a 20 feet. The separation from the, the highest existing antenna to the proposed antenna. And my understanding, and Brandy can correct me if I'm wrong, is that we don't have that measurement. And so we would need to know if that, if, if that separation distance is less than 20 feet.
I'm sorry, say that again. This is Mark Fuentes, I'm the applicant.
Sure. So the way, oh, nice to meet you. So the way the, the law reads, it says that the increase may be by the height of one additional antenna array with separation from the nearest existing antenna not to exceed 20 feet. So that's not a question of the height of the tower. It's the separation between the new, and the new proposed antenna and the highest existing antenna.
Yeah, it does read kind of funny. We are increasing it by the height of one carrier. But the maximum that you can raise it is 20 feet or 10% of the total height, whichever is greater. So we fall within the 20 feet of, of the extension by only increasing it by 15 feet and with one carrier.
Mr. Fuentes, yeah. Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm Brandy Nelson and I'm meeting the board members for the first time as well. So nice to meet you. Mr. Fuentes, I, I think the, the point we're trying to get at is what is the distance between the current highest carrier tower and the proposed AT&amp;T antennas? Is that 20 feet or is it more than 20 feet? It's not clear in the application materials. And we'd like you to be able to provide that information to us just so that we can verify whether or not this section of the code applies to you. We were looking at your plans.
Yeah. Hang on one second. Verizon is currently, the red center is 121.
And 121, and you will be at what?
140.
140, 141 or 142?
141 is the, the red center.
Okay.
Extension, the extension goes to 142.
So Emily and board, it's twen-, it is 20 feet. So it's not more than 20 feet. It is 20 feet?
It says not to exceed 20 feet. So that's 20.
Right. So that being the case, my understanding, Emily, is that the board still has review opportunity, but they need to make a decision with the clock that is currently ticking.
What about this 60-day business? Clock's almost run out.
Exactly.
It's six. They're going to get a variance for this because if they meet the 20 feet.
Right. So the board, so the board's opportunity is to ask the applicant questions and undertake your typical site plan review process. You know, I think common questions for these types of applications would be construction, duration of construction, and then any kind of permanent alteration. Obviously, the tower is getting taller, but are there any lights that will be on the tower? Are there any lights that will be associated with the new equipment that's going to be installed around the base of the tower? What sort of security fencing's in place? Those, those sorts of questions are typical for this type.
And they're reading a generator.
Correct.
Well.
Noise.
Are, are there any lights on the top of this tower? I, I didn't think of that one. No. No. So, you know, I took, I have to, I don't know if this is going to work with my background, but I took a picture of the tower and there's two arrays. It's going to be just a third array, the same height as the other two arrays. The third array would be the same height as, one is from two would be two to three. At 20 feet distance.
Shouldn't we have at least a, on the drawing, a specified height between the two, the tops of the two arrays so that we can verify before we approve this thing that it's 20 feet and not 20 feet and a one inch? So that we have some sort of agreement that that's the, it meets the eligible facilities portion of the code?
Mr. Fuentes, is there any reason you can't do that?
Just send it to me in writing and I can request it. Well, it seems like the October 19th is the last meeting before the clock runs out.
So can you provide that, that drawing with a measurement on it so that we can verify it by the 19th?
Yes, I mean, the, Ryan sends me the, the request. I'll send that, I'll forward that over to AT&amp;T.
Who's going to write that letter?
That's, I was just about to ask that, John. Thank you.
Brian, we can assist you with that. We had a, a couple of additional questions also.
Okay, Brandy, thank, thank, thank you. I guess one question that, that I have is, and maybe Emily can weigh in on this. Who is exactly providing final approval for this? Is it the planning board or is it the zoning board of appeals?
Well, if we, we can't do that. I mean, the zoning board of appeals couldn't meet until November and the clock is over, third week of November.
Or if you did the positive or negative recommendation tonight, they could be on the agenda for October 21st.
We don't know the, we don't know the specifications.
If it meets the eligible facilities, then it doesn't need a variance. Isn't that correct?
Well, the law says that you can't deny it. You don't act on it, then they just need to move forward as if you had approved it.
What we could do is deny it without, I mean, deny it without prejudice and have them come to the zoning board with the answers to Brandy's questions. And then, you know, the planning board could meet over email or something and make a final decision. But if we want to cut out the zoning board altogether, hi, Mark, I'm the village trustee who's the liaison for planning and zoning. Hi. That would be like the only way to, I, I, in my, to, to have the 10-day public hearing notice for the ZBA. Emily, I mean, I feel like that would be the only way to include the ZBA in this. Yeah?
Yeah, there's not a lot of time. It's, it's a 60-day clock. So.
Right.
Yeah.
I would suggest that the planning board take the action on the 19th. Once we have a verified document that pledges to make, to meet their request. It doesn't need a variance. Why does it have to refer to the ZBA?
Right. I, I think.
And if we are staying in procedure, Chair, this was a noticed pub, public hearing. So I would suggest that we motion to open the public hearing as well as to find out if anyone is here from the neighbors. And if not, then the board can close. So no one can take any judicial or legal action that we did not follow procedure.
Well, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. Do we have a second?
John seconds.
John seconds. Okay. Michael Gee.
Aye.
Suzanne.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
John Clark.
Aye.
David Miller, aye. Ryan, can I share my screen?
You sure can.
Okay. So what, all we're doing is asking for some measurements on this, the, the distances are. This is our above this tower. All right, to the third array. Somebody has a diagram. I guess Ryan, Ryan can request that. What would it look like and what are the measurements from the ground to here to here and the new height? And the distance between these two, that's 20 feet or less.
Okay. The measurement is not marked on the, on the plans as they stand right.
I, I, I do have a question. If I can share my screen and maybe show you. Let's see. Can you see this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I'm assuming that there is a lightning rod on top of the existing monopole. Would that be correct? Mr. Fuentes?
I believe there is.
Okay. So in the 81-page document that we received, on page 19, I see a drawing with these dimensions on it and excluding the lightning rod, which we assume there is at the top of the existing one. I see that the dimension to the top of the proposed AT&amp;T panel extension is 145 feet and that the height of the existing monopole is 127 feet. If we look at page 11, I also see this section that says it goes from 127 feet to 142 feet. If this is correct, that means that the entire addition, including the transducers or whatever you call them, is adding exactly 15 feet. Is the, am I reading this correctly?
The height of the, the extension would be to 142.
And that is because 142, okay.
So that's just the steel.
Okay, yeah, 142. And then you've got this little bit of, yeah, the height of the monopole extension, that's this thing here, 142. And it says that the proposed antennas, the height would be 145. So 140, once again, excluding the lightning rod, which we assume exists on the existing monopole, who, according to this drawing, is at 127 feet. That's the same dimensions on page 11, which say you're basically going from the top of the pole being 127 to the top of all of the equipment on top of the pole extension being 142. That is a 15-foot increment on top of the existing pole, not including the lightning rod, which wasn't accounted for in the top of the pole either one. So am I reading this correctly that these dimensions show that the total increase is 15 feet?
Top of the steel would be 142. 15-foot extension. Antenna center line would be 140. Should be 141. And the, the last line is a little lightning rod on top of the new.
Right.
Gray. Right. And that's if you're four foot, four foot lightning rod there. Three foot.
You know, and
Yeah.
And e- even if we take the top of the existing pole, which is 127, to the top of the pole extension with the addition of the antennas, which is 145, that is still only 17 feet. Is that correct?
Yes.
So let me stop my share here. Thank you. So if that, if those dimensions are in that 81-page document, which is a lot to plow through, and they're correct, it seems to me that there is no issue with the additional height that we need to concern ourselves with.
Okay, we, we, we've opened the public hearing. Is anyone here want to make any comments about the cell tower? Okay. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, Jeff.
Okay, roll call vote. Michael.
Aye.
Suzanne.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
David, aye. The public hearing. So Emily, where does that leave us? Do we have anywhere to go? Do we have any more questions to ask?
You're supposed to just ask questions to make sure that this falls within that eligible facilities request. So I think that your request to have that measurement marked on the plans is very reasonable.
And the generator, I don't know what noise the generator makes, the new generator, but it's only on during power outage. It's not like it's running constantly. Is that correct? Mr. Fuentes? That's correct. It'll exercise once a week for 10 minutes. You know, the time can be set so it doesn't bother any neighbors with their work schedules. Is that for the whole array? Like there is no generator currently? This is a generator for the new section? This is just for AT&amp;T, correct. So there is already a generator there? I'm not sure if the other two carriers have them. They might, Verizon typically does inside a shelter, I, but I don't know. But Brandy, you said you, you have all your questions been answered.
Yeah, I mean, we, we just received a packet and so we were looking through it still. Our, we, we reviewed a similar application recently for the town of Red Hook. In that instance, there was some exterior lighting on the equipment structure at the base of the tower. And, and I did, I did not see a light, Mr. Fuentes. Is there any exterior light for maintenance staff that may come? You know, during a power outage or, or a weather event or for maintenance that would be on regularly? And if so, could that be their motion controlled or switch controlled so that it's not on on a regular basis?
I don't believe the shelter has an external light.
Not at the egress door?
No. I haven't personally seen one. I've only seen drawings. Being on the front end of this, I don't get out to the field to see what they look like once they're completed.
Okay.
And you confirm that by the next meeting, whether there will or will not be a light and whether it can be motion control?
Yeah, I think I've got a document on the shelter itself, walk-in closet.
Well, I don't see, I don't think we need a variance because of the federal law trumps the, uh. Local law, I would assume, Emily, that. We, we can't say we want, we want a, a, a public hearing on the 15 foot height with neighbors coming in and. Images from the various neighbors around the area, would they be able to see the additional 15 feet from the north, southeast and west? Um, it doesn't seem like this is going to, uh, get us anywhere.
Oh, we still need the measurement from the top of the existing array to the top of the new array. We don't have that measurement on those plans.
How, yeah, well, my point was this, how is that not the measurements that were on page 19 that I just shared?
I showed to the top of the tower, not to the top of the antenna array.
Yeah, it does. Um, the, the, the panel antennas are at 145, the top of the tower.
Existing antennas are not shown, the height of the existing antennas.
Mr. Christiansen.
Oh, I see.
The FCC, um, 20 foot designation is the spacing between antenna packs, so.
Okay.
The one that is currently the top is, is below the top of the tower. So we, we would just like to verify that it is in fact 20 feet, not more than 20 feet.
I, I, I understand. So that's the dimension that's missing in that drawing, the top of the existing antenna array, not the top of the monopole.
Correct.
Okay.
The only problem will be is if they come back and say, well, it's actually 20.2 inches. And then we don't have time to do a, a variance.
No, then, then, uh, I'll let Emily jump in, but then I, I don't believe that provision applies then.
Exactly, exactly.
You'd go back to your standard process.
All right, so the 60 day clock would, would not be, um. Applied in that case.
Yes.
If it's more than 20 feet. All right, now they, they have an incentive to come back with a drawing that shows 20 feet or less. Because otherwise, uh, we'll start over and go to the planning board, planning board and then the zoning board.
All right, then I'll make a motion to continue this to October 19th. Um, waiting for final calculations of the, uh, the third array. So we can make a determination that it is, it is less than 20 feet or not, and then we take it from there.
I'll second that motion, John.
Okay, uh, all those in favor, Michael?
Aye.
Suzanne.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
David, aye. Okay, we'll see you on the 19th and then. We'll see what happens. So if it comes out that it's 21 feet or 20 feet, one inch. Then the clock stops and we can then make recommendations of variances and. That would overshadow the public hearings coming in. We asked for like site, you know, view shed like looks of what it would like from. What it would look like from various neighbors, like the neighbor, your captain is right behind that. And the fairgrounds, I'm not sure if the fairgrounds is concerned with it. It's, as far as they see, it's in a low area. In the back of the fairgrounds, but that would be handy to make that determination. But all right, we'll see what happens on the 19th and take it from there. Thank, thanks you, Emily. Thank you, Brandy. Nice to meet both of you.
You as well.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good to see you again one of these days. Okay, the next item on the agenda is La Prendigas 22 Livingston Street. Extension of the rear, uh. Your wall created a larger kitchen space, then extension to a larger second floor. And added deck, really created a second floor. I think we've, we've, uh. We've seen these plans. I walked by, I think I sent everybody to watch some pictures. Uh, because we're, we're always concerned when someone adds the second floor to a house or a garage. If, if you were listening into the previous, uh, the first applicant, that windows would look out over the neighbors, which is what we're always concerned about. And you have three windows on each side of the building. Um, but I took pictures out there and said to them, what, doesn't it appear your neighbors have windows? On the side of either of their buildings that your six windows would look down on? So, uh. You guys have questions about this from the planning board?
Uh, we don't. We've spoken to Dan, our architect, who was with you guys a few weeks back. Uh, maybe it was last week. And, um, he said everything seemed to go smoothly.
So are we having a public hearing on this, Ryan?
We sure are, Chair.
Okay, I have a motion to open the public hearing. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Suzanne.
Suzanne, second, is it? Okay, uh, Michael G.
Aye.
Suzanne.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
David, aye. And the public hearing is open. Does any one of the neighbors who were notified about the public hearing? Have, would like to make any comment, please raise your hand. Uh, send a chat to Ryan. Okay.
I'm not seeing anything, Chair.
All right, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, roll call vote, Michael.
Aye.
Suzanne.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
David, aye. Okay, the public hearing is closed. The board want to make comments on the plan.
I believe everyone should have the revised plans. Um, Dan provided them to me. Uh, I believe right around the deadline date. Um, I believe they were to answer Jeff's concerns. Um, based on those revisions, Jeff has, have your concerns been satisfied or met?
Yes, and, and those are the only changes that were made to the plans?
As far as I can tell, and based on the email from Dan, those were the only things addressed and what you. Raised at the last meeting and unless, um, other members. Um, have anything to add or would like to discuss with the applicants. Uh, you guys have the option of final approval tonight.
I think it looks fine. I, I, I think they, they, whoever did the design did a really good job of making it fit within the existing. Building, it won't be seen from the public street, so. I think I'm okay with what's being proposed.
I am okay too. I think it did a wonderful job. That's a really tough block. That is like the tightest houses density in the village, that section of, uh. Of, of that street. Um, it's just, you guys are really close. And it's great that, maybe because you were so close, people didn't put windows on the side to the building. Like living in a tenement, looking out at your neighbor. So that was probably a reason why they didn't do that. So I, I think it's a great design. I think you can't, you can't see it from the street. And it certainly, we always encourage these kinds of things to bump out a master, uh. A master suite on the first floor because people can't make it up to the second floor. Or a kitchen and dining room to expand it, to increase the living space, living in a small existing historic home. And I think the architects done a wonderful job. Uh, anybody else have any comments?
Nice job.
And it's a well-maintained property too. It looks great. It's a nice little house.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We love it here.
Anybody else? Michael, Suzanne, you're okay?
No, I'm fine with it. It looks great.
Hey, do I have a motion to approve the site plan for, uh, 22 Livingston Street?
I'll move, John.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Michael.
Roll call vote, Michael.
Yes, aye.
Suzanne.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
And David, aye. Good luck, guys. It's a beautiful design. I'm sure it'll be, uh, nice living in a, in a bigger house.
So Laura, uh, so Laura, just have Dan, um, email me tomorrow. And we can all sort of go over next steps and sort of the, sort of next phase of paperwork.
Perfect. I'll send him a text message tonight and let him know. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. You guys are all set.
Thanks.
Next item on agenda is continued business, unlimited tomorrow. Are they here tonight?
They are.
Good evening, everybody. Andy Diddio with Theconic Engineering. Um, I have a, a minor update, essentially, as we discussed at the last meeting. Um, the planning board had, uh, requested that we review relocation of some of the parking to try and put it on the side. Or, or potentially even the rear of the building. Um, so one of the things that we wanted to square away before we do that is to identify the septic location, so. Um, we haven't gotten there. The applicant is, uh, is looking for a little bit of institutional knowledge from. Um, previous owners and previous applicant, uh, sorry, tenants. So, um, and. Ultimately, I think we're going to end up doing a field investigation and doing camera scope and field locating everything. On site so that we have definitive location and then we'll put together a plan. Where we can try and relocate some of the parking as well as, um, discuss some planting options, I think were, were discussed. Uh, to, uh, screen out some of the front parking.
Would you like us to carry this over to some future date until you're ready to, uh, come back?
Yeah, I think, I think we may as well, um, shoot for the 19th if, uh, if we're not gonna, if it doesn't look like we're gonna hit that date because of, um. You know, some setbacks on getting scheduling machinery and whatnot to uncover the septic, then I'll let Ryan know and we'll push to, uh, November. If they're right with the board.
Okay, do we have a motion to? Do we have a motion to, uh, carry this forward to the, uh, 19th?
I'll move, Suzanne.
Second, John.
Second is John. Okay, Michael G.
Aye.
Suzanne.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
David, aye. All right, we'll see you on the 19th or later if necessary.
Okay, thank you all.
Good luck with your explorations.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda. Is 55 South Street. Suzanne Merson, Robert Maripoli Architect. Host three season porch with our request to, uh. Have some plantings to hide the air conditioner spacing the street.
Um, that is odd, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Maripodai was on. And part of the meeting and it seems he has either left or. Um. I don't know what has happened.
All right.
And.
We'll see if he reemerges and move on to the next item.
Sure.
Okay, next item is new business. Well, it doesn't seem like new business, Lydian Michael Slavik, 25 Mulberry Street. Amendment or revision to the positive or negative recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. And the zoning board of appeals said it wasn't clear. What we stated and they weren't sure, um, what our intentions were in our unanimous vote. Uh, we had a meeting with Ken. To talk about variances and, um. Basically, I don't have the plan, uh, in front of me, um. But. If the garage is on the side, the side yard of the garage is five feet. The property line, the variance would not continue all the way to the street. The variance would drop back to 10 feet after the garage, continue with 10 feet till you hit the carport. Then need a second variance, go back to five feet, pass the carport, go back to 10 feet until you hit the street. So it's two variances. Which both have to have findings on them. So.
Actually, three variances.
John, right.
The property line as well.
We talked about that too.
Yep, and it just got more complicated because I finally got a final site plan from Mark Kerminski, so. There's that fun that we can talk about as well today.
We. You keep changing the, the rules every time you do.
I'm trying not to, but you know, between like the architect and the engineer, it's turning out to be a harder problem than we all thought.
We have, we haven't gotten anywhere close to site plan approval yet. We're still trying to deal with the variances.
Right.
The question is, has that changed?
It has a bit. Um, can I do a screen share to?
Yes, by all means.
Okay. Please.
Please.
All right. Um, share. So can you, can you see this as I'm like?
Yeah.
Doing this? Okay, great. So what we realized when we were designing the, the, the house renovation. Is the property, the, the property is not actually a rectangle. And so the house is parallel with Mulberry Street. But. The back of the property is not parallel with Mulberry Street. So. Um, we have, we, we thought about putting like an elbow in the house and I thought that was insane. And so what we've done is we've made the garage and, and the pool unfortunately is. Square with the back of the property, so. There were like some existing things that we had to kind of work around, so. The house is a little bit at an angle and then the garage is square to the back of the property and then the pool is square to the back of the property, so. This is where we are. And so what happened is when we actually did all of the final measurements, once Mark really kind of like focused on this with all of the CAD drawings from John Decker. Is the portco share goes from five feet from the property line to three and a half feet to the property line. So suddenly, instead of asking for a five foot variance, we're now asking for a six and a half foot variance. Um. And then, you know, there's the rest of this and then the garage is still a five foot and a five foot. So that's where we are.
So we need to make three recommendations.
Yep, one for.
Rear yard garage, side yard garage and side yard to the, pardon my French, carport.
Yep.
Um, and. The findings and the justification for making that each of those recommendations. So we're very clear to the ZBA because they were not, they were a little confused by our, uh. Our recommendation, so we need to make the recommendations and we need to put the findings in for all three of them. Why we're voting positive or negative on.
So which one do you want to start with? Do you want to start with the garage? Cause I think it's simpler?
Yes, so, um, I need a, a positive or negative recommendation for the rear yard setback of five feet for the garage.
So.
Want to make a positive or negative recommendation for the rear yard setback of the garage.
Do you want me to summarize again why it's, why it is in the location where it is?
Okay.
So this line here, and I can scroll to a, a different drawing, that's the engineering drawings, but this, this distance here from. This corner of the slab to the new septic field has to be at a minimum 10 feet. So that is sort of what pushes it five feet to the north. Um, and then. What pushes it five feet to the west, I mean, to the east is. Similarly, it can't be right on top of the, the septic field right here, so. This line here. Lines up here with the septic field. Like that. Um, and this is the only place to put the septic field because it has to be 35 feet, which is this circle right here from the pool. Um, so. Literally, this is the only place in the, in the, in the garden. I mean, if we're gonna build a garage at all, this is the only place on the property where we. I mean, if we're gonna build a garage at all, this is the only place on the property where we can have a septic field. We have already made the septic field smaller by converting the four bedroom house into a three bedroom house. And the Board of Health is doing us a favor by granting us a one and a half foot variance here because technically, septic fields are also supposed to be 10 feet from the neighbor, from the property line. So between the 35 feet from the pool and the 10 feet from the property line and the 10 feet from the slab, like this is kind of where we are. So that is the loc, that is the location of the garage.
Variance is now, on, on these plans, I think a question that came up at the planning board, at the zoning board, was lot coverage. So all the calculations, pools count, patios count, garages count. Is that on the plan that shows it's under the number?
Yes, so we go from a 14.7% lot coverage to a 24.7% lot coverage, which are both under 30% lot coverage.
And explain the patio on that drawing.
This patio that surrounds the pool?
The one that's next to the garage.
So this is, so it has, so the septic field has to be 10 feet from a concrete slab. And I can, I can pull up the design for the garage again if that would be helpful, but I don't know if you remember, but the.
I don't.
Okay, all right, let me find that then. Hold on.
I just explained is when you say covered, does it have a?
Yeah, so it's a two story garage and so on top of the garage is, I don't know why my computer keeps doing that, but on top of the garage is a, is an office and then on top of the covered patio slash freeway is a, is another room. And so it's, so John, this is actually like one of those historic barns that has a second story on top of.
Okay.
A first story with like, you know, where people would wash the carriage.
You've included that in the coverage, right?
Ye- yes, that is included in the coverage because it's covered by.
For the septic system because it's.
No, because it's not a slab. We're gonna do that in Bluestone.
Okay, all right. As long as that, that complies to, because it didn't make sense that a covered building, to me, wouldn't be the same as building.
Right, so it, it counts for lot coverage, but it doesn't count for septic field.
Okay.
God save us all.
I, I think the first two variances would have the same justification, but we have to vote on each one of them, the rear yard and the side yard. And the findings have to be clear for the zoning board of appeals because they said they were not clear last time. So.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just for clearer clarification and, and John, so we are clear and, and to get it out of the way now, is it now four variances?
No, I think it would.
Because the one corner of the port cochere is five. This corner of the port cochere is 3.5. And then everything else that has to deal with the garage.
No, I think the three and a half would, would be the, would be the maximum and that, and that's what you'd have to go with. With, with the, with the shorter side is it doesn't matter. It's the largest variance is what we would go with. So instead of five, it's a six and a half foot variance for the carport.
I just want to be clear because we're gonna have to renotice all of the neighbors because of the change.
For the public hearing at the ZBA.
There's one variance or three variances total, one variance for the port cochere because you, you do it to the narrowest spot.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's six and a half feet. Doesn't matter what the other side is. It's the smallest one is, is three and a half feet. So it's a six and a half foot variance for the, that. And then, so the first thing I need is a record, is a positive or negative recommendation for the rear yard setback of the garage. Anybody?
I'll make a positive recommendation for the, for the rear yard variance.
Michael, do we have, do we have a second?
John, seconds.
Okay, and the findings are before we vote. The, the findings are, it's pretty standard in the village or garages and other outbuildings to be five feet from the property line. And second, the Board of Health requirements for this building meet, say it has to be 10 feet, that corner of the building has to be 10 feet away from the septic field. So the garage has to be pushed back in two directions to be five feet from the property line.
To support, to support those findings, I'd like the site plan to be updated to include those dimensions so that they're obvious. Because when this goes to the, when this goes back to the ZBA, rather than try to explain this verbally, those dimensions should be on there. For example, in the prior site plan, which we're looking at here, right?
Yeah, this is the one for the, this is the one for Duchess County. Yeah.
Okay.
So you can see this 10 feet right here.
Yeah, yeah. And, and notice that the 35 foot pool setback radius is shown here. And that's one reason why that, that septic field has to be there and can't be moved in any other direction. And you already got a variance from the county for the lower. So that, that calculate, that, that dimension is important for the ZBA to understand. That septic field had to be there and because that septic field had to be there, that 10 foot dimension from the corner of the building to the septic field, which you've already gotten a variance on, pushed the building for both the rear and side setbacks. So if, if you're gonna submit the new, or is this the one you're gonna submit, Lydia?
Well, yeah, it's two pages. So if you want, we can, we can add that dimension to this one here.
Well, yeah, well, okay, as long as.
Yeah, which I'm happy to do.
As long as it's on it, because this is our reasoning that we're, we're explaining. The, the 37 and the 35 foot pool setback determined the location, the restricted, the location of the septic field and the 10 foot setback from the restricted location of the septic field to the corner of the proposed garage determine that dimension, right?
So those are three reasons. The, the common practice of garages, sheds, outbuildings in five feet with the property line in the village, 10 foot has to be, pushes the garage back in both directions to five feet. And Board of Health 35 foot from the pool positions where the septic field has to be.
Think also you should note in the conditions that the neighbors' properties both have garages and barns that are within that sort of same distance. And that the applicant got supporting letters from the neighbors as part of the process.
Yeah, Rick and Lisa, they got a variance for this five feet here for their garage. This barn was preexisting and you can see that it's three feet here and all of the neighbors are fine with this. And actually, Fire Chief Kyle Amy, also we consulted him and he said that 10 feet here was fine.
Oh, Ryan, do you have that down that we can make that clear to the ZBA?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's have a roll call vote.
We are, we're doing the two variances on the barn.
Right, we'll climb. But we'll have a ditto for the findings, but we gotta make two motions.
Okay.
So roll call vote, John Clark.
Hi.
Jeff.
Hi.
Suzanne.
Hi.
Michael.
Hi.
David, I. Okay, five to nothing, positive recommendation for the rear yard, five foot setback variance for the garage. I'll make a motion for the side yard setback of the garage to be five feet as well. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
You do it.
Findings are ditto, okay? The exact findings as in the first variance. Okay, Ryan?
Uh, yes.
Okay, a roll call vote. Suzanne.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Michael.
Hi.
Jeff.
Hi.
David, I. Okay, that passes unanimously. The third variance, the carport. We have a motion to make a positive variance for a six and a half foot side yard variance for the port cochere.
I want some more information on this. Is, is that the narrowest that that port cochere can be in order to allow safely a car to unload and pass through?
Well, let me, let me, let me screen, let me share a different screen. How do I do this? Oh, stop share. Okay. All right. Here. I will pull this up, east and west, north, east and west. Okay. So here. This is the view from the front of the house. This is the port cochere. So we were matching, the architect was matching the foundation and so this would actually be a solid wall. And so what we could do potentially to answer your question, John, is we could make this like not a solid wall all along the north wall and instead just have this be a column so you can see it from the front and it looks like it matches the foundation and it does from the front. But from the side, it's not a solid wall, in which case we could bring this in a bit so that we can open both doors without running a door into this little wall right here. So there, so there is that. That is something that we could do. But this was originally designed in order to have, you know, a car and we mostly use the truck, but in order to have a car with both doors open under the port cochere. So that's how it was originally designed. And also, you know, to get vehicles back to street service, whatever, into the backyard in order to be able to do work.
So you'd be able to drop off your groceries and then pull into the garage?
Yeah, or pull into the back sort of car area.
And you'd be able to close that fence and have cars on the other side of the fence instead of out in the street where they are now.
Right, and this, I mean, although it looks like the car is like super obvious in the front of the house, this is actually about 30 feet back from the front of the house.
What is the dimension of that opening? You know?
About 14, 14 feet. That's the wrong one. So this is what it looks like from the north. So you can see here, right now, it's like a solid little wall. But we could just make it columns instead of a solid wall. And that way, we could make the door a little bit easier to open.
That would make sense to me.
Okay, so I mean, like ideally, we'd like to have the whole thing covered, but you know, that is something that we're willing to be flexible on obviously in order to make this work.
I'm not concerned about the covering, I'm concerned about the width.
Right. Yeah.
It is pretty wide. Now, you know, you might want to get a truck back in there to, you know.
Yeah, but these, you know, these trucks need to max out at something like 11 feet in order to be on highways and so.
Exactly, so.
Yeah.
If you could make those columns so that you can open the door in between the columns, you could make it a couple of feet shorter, I would guess.
Okay. So what we can do, I mean, especially now that like the, the site plan came out that instead of five feet, which is sort of what made sense to all of us, it's now six and a half feet, we could shrink it by a foot and a half in order to have the variance be also five feet to match with the garage.
I would think that that's a, you know, normally variances are the minimum or the maximum that absolutely necessary, you know, and if you can make that a foot and a half, narrow or 14 feet is pretty wide for a, you know, a typical garage door or any other sort of door where you have to open up your car doors. If you could make those columns and shorten it by a foot and a half, I think you'd make a better effort at doing everything you can to minimize the variance and therefore and make it equivalent to what we've already approved in the back.
Yep. I'm happy to do that.
Well, do I have a positive or negative, negative recommendation for a five foot variance for the port cochere?
I'll make a motion in support of a five foot variance.
I'll second the motion.
That was John with the motion.
Right. Did someone second it?
Yeah, me, Suzanne.
Suzanne, okay. So the findings for the ZBA.
All right, so for that. Oh, hi, look at my email. So, so if we're shrinking this, so it's actually six and a half over here and then five over here, then that brings the driveway to basically go straight into the garage. So I would argue that it is wide enough to have a car actually be able to unload stuff from inclement weather to sort of use the port cochere as it's meant to be used. Port cocheres are historically appropriate to the era of the historic district and this allows a car to be able to move back into the garage with a straight driveway here. Those at least are the arguments that I laid out in an earlier memo that I drafted for the ZBA.
And I think added to that, the findings that it's a port cochere, it's an open, non livable space. So it doesn't have the same impact as a livable space, a five foot off the property line.
Yeah.
People often have driveways and unloading of cars near property lines in the village because of the width of the lots.
And ideally, it'll be, you know, barely be able to be seen from, from the street other than just like the roof line. So.
And it, and the five foot variance lines up with that for the side yard setback for the garage.
Right.
And again, the neighbor has endorsed, as far as I know, the neighbor has endorsed this project so that variance is not opposed by the adjacent property owner.
Ryan, do you have that down?
I do. So I just want to make sure be just so everything is correct that based on John Clark's positive recommendation that everything remains fi- at five feet and therefore the relief is five feet for the carport poker, port cochere and the side yard setback. Is that correct?
Sounds good.
Okay, so therefore we, if that is the case, then there's no need to renotice the neighbors because all, everything is remaining somewhat the same as stated in the notice previous. So if, if that is the case, then we, we don't have to concern ourselves with, with that. So things can move forward on October 20, 21st then.
Okay, roll call vote, Michael Gee.
Hi.
Jeff.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Suzanne.
Hi.
David, I. Okay, so three unanimous positive recommendations for the three variances.
Thank you all. I very much appreciate your time. Thank you all. I very much appreciate your time. And I'm sorry, this is lasting four months. Sorry, for all of us, this is lasting for months.
I know, it said new business. I say, are you kidding?
Let me figure out a way to stop.
But we have to be technical about it.
You do, I understand. A good man, Ryan. All right, we have one more item on the agenda and it's a recommendation to the ZBA.
So Mr. Chair, 55 South Street, Mr. Maropodi is here, so I don't know if we want to take care of that. I guess you can make the call or if you want to ask Victoria.
Let's do Victoria, she's waited a long time.
Okay.
Thank you. Hi, everyone.
So just hang, hang, hang tight, Robert. We're, we're going to circle back to you.
Thank you. So, um, we asked for this. We had, uh, we met with Berkshire Hathaway Signs with Paul from Timely Signs. And Paul said this has not been looked at in decades. We finally made a determination, what, the last meeting, the meeting before that, that Halcyon, AKA Calico was same address but different building. And we gave Halcyon a sign, which now the coach is gone, they're really, you can't even have, they rent out the coach store, there's no room for a sign. But by doing that, taking Halcyon out of the calculation, the variance that Victoria was originally requesting is now less because it's a we took, we took the Halcyon calculation out of it. So Victoria sent the letter to, uh, getting late. You're now asking for a variance from 65. So just the telephone building, the 65 feet from 53 feet? Is that what you're asking for?
No, I, oh, okay. Go ahead, go, go ahead, Victoria.
Right. So i- if Justin agrees that the Calico Halcyon space is a, is a separate building, then the size of the variance is reduced. And just to give all the board members a quick update. Um, yeah, let me share this. The, the space that we're talking about is here. And the struggle is that your code penalizes long buildings. It was really designed for, you know, smaller facades because it limits the, the amount of signage to 30 square feet, no matter how big the building is. And you can see here that this is a very long facade. And so what, what the client is asking for is a variance that would allow each storefront to have modest signage of a wall sign such as the one for Caesar and Lily and a hanging sign such as the one at Caesar and Lily. And so each, each storefront would be able to have a sign that could be seen from across the street and one that could be seen walking on the sidewalk. So a wall sign and a hanging sign. And, um, they're asking for a blanket variance so that, um, you know, sizes could be adjusted a little bit at each as needed. But there would be enough for each tenant to put up that sign.
Because we just redid the Berkshire Hathaway sign and we could not give them Berkshire Hathaway on the wall because the, the numbers didn't work. So variants you're asking for, are we going to assume Justin agrees? I mean, justification is you can move from store to store within the telephone building, but Calico is a separate building? Or is that?
So I, we asked Justin to make the determination that it's a separate building for zoning purposes because you cannot go from one space to the other on the, the first or second floors or anything like that. You know, they are connected with plumbing. But if you look at it from the facade for purposes of your sign regulation, they do appear to be separate storefronts and separate facades.
So, Ms. Mr. Chair, I can, I can offer some, some light on this. Justin is aware of Victoria's letter. He has re-reviewed it. He was going to prepare a written statement for the board tonight. However, he ended up in the emergency room. I believe at Vassar. So unfortunately, due to circumstances beyond his control, he wasn't able to provide anything in writing for the board tonight. But he is aware of the letter, he is aware of the new numbers and the new calculation. And I believe the new requested relief of Victoria would be 23 feet. If we do 53 out of, or no, is that, did I misinterpret your letter?
It would be reduced to a 50, to 53 feet is what we'd be requesting.
From?
You're allowed 30.
Right.
And we would need more than 30.
So if you subtract 30 from 53, the relief is 23, correct? That 23 feet is your, that's the relief you're asking for?
If Justin says, she says it's okay.
So I, I mean, tonight, just, just so we don't have to come back, I mean, I would ask that you make a recommendation on the larger variance request. And if it turns out that Justin, you know, finds that the request is reduced by virtue of that Calico space being a separate building, then you know, I would hope the zoning board would accept that you also recommend a smaller variance if you're going to recommend a larger one. It makes really no difference from the visual perspective because each space is going to have uniform signage.
But the question I have is that you have, I think, very sensible signage on the front building, front of the buildings for the front storefronts. But then you have this long hallway and a bunch of stuff in the back. And what you're asking for is the people in the back would have the exact same? Is that what I'm, and I misunderstanding?
What we're asking for is that here, let me share my screen again. That each storefront, so this space, this space, this space, this space and the space, even the, the long storefront, each door basically be allowed to have one wall sign and one hanging sign. And so, you know, right now, we don't want to mess with any lease agreements for existing tenants. So, you know, the Dr. Tom signs are, are there. But in the future, if there's ever another tenant, you know, that, that signage could possibly be replaced with a directory sign down the road and not have that hanging sign.
Alright.
But, but you know.
The 23 foot excess, uh, square footage that you're asking for really only covers the existing Dr. Tom sign and the three, four reasonable storefront signs. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, and I, I believe we added an extra foot and a half because the Berkshire Hathaway has some additional signage that you approved recently.
They want their name on the top, like Caesar and Lily.
I don't find any of those signs objectionably large and I think, I think the rear buildings can be handled with a directory sign on or adjacent to the door. So I think that the variance request is reasonable, given that none of those buildings or those storefronts have unreasonable signage. They don't look too large. They look perfectly acceptable and I, I agree that you need a wall and a projecting sign for a storefront in, in the village.
And this board would still have the ability to review and approve the individual signs when they come in for the sign permits. So again, this is just so that we don't have to go to the zoning board every time there's a new tenant in order to, to get approval, you know, the ability to put up a sign. And again, at this point, they're, they're not proposing the directory sign, but if it's needed in the future, it can be swapped out under this variance.
And so we're asking, not 23, we're going for the bigger number, which is?
Oh, we had, we had submitted for an area variance to 65 square feet of signage.
Including Calico.
That includes the Calico space. And so if, if Mr. Noyes determines that Calico is not part of the building, we will, you know, take that off proportionally.
You want 35 feet then?
Additionally.
Variance for 35 feet of additional, 35 square feet of additional signage.
Yeah, given, you know, the unique size of this building.
Okay, so do I have a positive or recommendation for a, a variance of 35 feet for 6384 Mill Street? Suzanne makes the motion. Do we have a second?
No, no, I have a question.
Oh, question, okay.
Yeah, I remember the last time this building came up, I think it was John that brought up the sidewalk, the condition of the sidewalk is really bad in front of that building. And I, I have walked by there and I don't know if there's any way that we can include a request for the owner to do something to repair it because it really is a tripping hazard there between the curb and where the sidewalk starts. It's, this is a big, like a one to two inch raised area. I don't know if that's something that we can do.
I mean, I'd say it's not appropriate to link that to a, this signage request, but I can, you know, I duly noted your comments and I will, I will share them with the owner.
We had talked with Mr. Resevedo about that years ago, that some, the concrete is, is, is a, like inches above the granite curb. You get, you gotta, you try to open your car door, you hit the, uh, the sidewalk, which is sticking up in the air.
It's more, more likely a, a ankle turning problem, you know, you have like a six inch drop off at the edge of the sidewalk into the non-grass strip there. So it needs to be filled in. And I agree, you can't make that a condition of the variance, but I think it's just before we leave, it just should be noted so that, and I think we should bring it up also to the zoning enforcement officer or the highway department or whoever has jurisdiction over that.
Can you confirm it's the owner's responsibility on Route 9 in the DOT right of way to maintain the sidewalks?
That's our understanding. You know, we're not the official bodies here, but in the past, everybody who has sidewalks along there has to take care of their own sidewalks, even though it's a state road and in the right of way. And I would think that the applicant would want to cover it anyway because it's a real hazardous condition. But in terms of, where were we in terms of the variances?
Thank you, Suzanne, for reminding us. Um, we need a recommendation.
I have a question. How does this building compare to the one on Market Street where Northern Duchess Pharmacy used to be? Because that seems to be another lengthy building with four, five stores. I mean, we set in a precedent by gaining that and then the person who owns that is going to say, well, I want what they got.
So I can pull that up on parcel access, but that building does have signage on each storefront. I believe it's Darrell's and I don't recall the, the business next to it, but I believe they each have a wall sign.
There's four or five, so it's, it's, it's another lengthy building.
With one address. I don't know if that's one building with one address.
One thing that I thought was really interesting was that the, the prior zoning law allowed 60 square feet of signage. And it was reduced at some point, so.
What was the prior, in 2001 or when, when was, that wasn't labeled in terms of a date?
It was the one, uh, let me see, what's the date? The, the version prior to 2001.
Yeah, that's a long time ago, but and you know, you can say it's penalizing a, a long building. I somewhat agree. But it also doesn't allow oversigns on short buildings, you know? So I remember when the, um, the courtyard came in, there's a building with a relatively narrow frontage, but a lot of large stores in the back and they had to have a variance for a similar reason.
Right.
I ended up with a directory sign that had to have a variance as I remember it. So I think there have been precedents set for larger scale buildings that have tenants in the back and.
And again, the signage that's being requested is not unreasonable. It's, it's modest size sign similar to the Caesar and Lily. And, you know, it, it almost looks funny to not have signage on the building. You have to be able to identify this, the stores and the tenants.
I'll make the motion for the positive recommendation.
Okay, do we have a second?
Thank you.
John will second.
Okay, now the finding, let's be clear on this. The first issue, the first finding is we asked for this. We felt that this building had not been looked at in a very long time. Signage was not sufficient for the building and we requested a calculation be done to have appropriate signage on the building. So the planning board asked for this calculation, which is why we're supporting it. The, uh, what's another finding for the ZBA? I'm not sure we're very clear with them.
That unlike many other buildings, this, this single address is an exceedingly long building and, and as Victoria pointed out, with, with the, with the same code that applies to the single address buildings, this long address building shops are being penalized. And we want to remedy that.
And I always point out.
It has multiple tenants rather than one big frontage with one tenant.
Yes. Better said, John.
I mean, it's the appearance of individual stores because each one has its own door.
Okay, you have that down, Ryan, for the ZBA?
Uh, can somebody just repeat it? I was handling something else.
We're recording it, yes. We asked for it because it's an unusually long building. We asked for a calculation and we asked the owner to come in and apply for a variance for more signage.
Why, we asked for a calculation and they came up with the need for a variance.
Right. And
this is a, a long building with multiple storefronts, so it, it would penalize the storefronts because it's not one major tenant, it's four individual storefronts on a long building. I think we should also make clear in this that the motion is for a 53 foot threshold if Calico, the Calico building is not included and 65 if it is. Depending on the ruling of the building zoning enforcement officer or whoever is doing it.
Jeff had a, what, and I think Suzanne, Suzanne had one, and Jeff had one.
I think John clarified my comment more succinctly.
Okay, and Suzanne, you?
Uh, same, yeah, just that there is an appearance when you look at the building of individual storefronts because each one has their own door.
Got it.
All right, roll call vote, Michael.
Aye reluctantly.
Suzanne?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
David? Aye. Okay.
Thank you, everyone. Always a pleasure.
Thank you, Victoria, for doing this. It's good.
So, uh, Victoria, all the neighbors will be notified. And we're looking at October 21st. Most likely you will be the second hearing on the docket. Because obviously the SLABIA application will be the first.
Okay, do I have to send out the notices or will you do that?
Uh, I do that. I have to do that. And there needs to be some further discussion of the meeting setting, but I will let you know about that way ahead of time.
Okay, great. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Victoria.
Now, we need to circle back to 55 South Street for Mr. Maropadi.
So we, um, asked for, planting, so hide the air conditioners.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I submitted a revised site plan with the plantings listed and.
Yeah, I submitted a revised site plan with the plantings listed and indicated.
Get that? Did you get that, Ryan?
Yes, I circulated everything that Mr. Marapadai provided to me, to the board, leading up to the meeting. So Mr. Marapadai, you can either share your screen or if someone has it queued up.
You have it, Jeff?
I, I do, I do. Let me share my screen. I've got it queued up. Can you all see this?
Yeah, both two viburnum and a hydrangea. One hydrangea. And then a metal trellis. Something else and then the other side is a what? Rose of Sharon. That, that's a. Evergreen?
It's a flowering. Bush. It's either a bush or tree. I'm sorry, I don't have much of a green thumb.
It's more of a tree than a bush. But the privet hedges is the most dominant screening element of the landscape.
The comments I would make are, I think we need to have evergreen. Evergreen plantings that would be there year round. We see one suggested with the privet hedge. The rest of them are not evergreens. Rose of Sharon in very southern growing zones can be an evergreen, but it is not an evergreen here. So that rose of Sharon would be, look like sticks in the winter as would the viburnum and the hydrangea. As would the viburnum shown on the left, the hydrangea puniculata. We would have to see what size that is. But I would suggest to start with that we want evergreen plantings and we need them such that they will obscure the the units. If I can share a picture here. So here's a picture of the corner by the driveway. Did that come up for everyone?
No, Jeff, I think you gotta stop.
Yeah, we gotta, this is interesting. We gotta do the stop and the start share each time. Interesting, okay. How about this?
Those do not look like evergreens.
Okay, so here's the point. There may be some plants like a like a rose of Sharon that would kind of look like this in the winter. So what we absolutely need, in my opinion, are evergreen plantings that go around there. Secondly, they need to be pretty high because, and I'll stop and I'll start another share here. Can you see this one with the can? Do you see this photo with the can?
No.
No, yeah, Jeff.
All right, hold on. Let's try it again. How about that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so here's the point. And this is kind of interesting because the can just happened to be decided. These Welsh cans are three and a half feet high. And the tops of these, so I think it's safe to estimate that the top of these conditioning units are probably about a four foot elevation. The suggestion, for example, to get privet hedges, I think they would have to be at least three feet, maybe three and a half feet to start with. As opposed to just agreeing on privet hedges and then seeing one foot or eighteen inch high privet hedges go in. It would take a while to mature.
Well, we are planning on putting a tall privet hedge that would grow four feet and then maintained, you know, seasonally so that they are not too high.
Your audio is breaking up, didn't quite catch that. You would start with what height?
It would start with high privet hinges that would come up to at least the height of the units.
You mean the top? The top of the units?
Exactly.
Okay, so that would be like a four foot high hedge?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then there's other decorative plantings in front of the privet. It's a whole landscaped front of the house, so it's not just the privet.
And it doesn't show in combination. On the left side, it doesn't show a privet hedge.
Well, we don't have the AC units in the front of the house. The landscaper felt that the hydrangea would suffice to hide or mask the the two meters, the electrical meters that are on the wall.
We, can you see this photo now? Yeah, so on the side of the house, there are, there's one unit in, pretty much in the front corner of the house. Right around that corner is the triple electric meter. And just on the opposite side of the chimney are an additional three units. So again, I think that the, I think there would need to be. Let's get this back up. I agree with the, I agree with the comment that there would need to be some type of evergreen planting in that corner as well, at least to get the front corner, that front corner item. In this site plan, by the way, all of the units are not shown. We're only, it looks like on the front left corner, there's a front and a side unit, but there's another three units on the other side of the chimney. And on the driveway side, there were two units, not one. Now, there's a lot.
It's a lot there. If you have enough bushes or evergreens to block the electric meters and the first air conditioner chimney and would hide the ones which were even further back. If you have some blockage and there isn't the driveway on that side to have more, you know, leeway to put some kind of evergreens across there, just to hide this, you know?
I agree, I agree with David's comment. The units behind the chimney are less obvious, but the unit in the front corner is very obvious along with the triple electric meters.
I've never seen anyone put electric meters on the front of a house or air conditioners. So, you know, the privet hedge on the right side looks sort of okay, but it's going to be that height. We need a similar kind of evergreen on the left side of the house to hide the electric meters and the first air conditioner.
If I could go back to the homeowner, I mean, I did. I did offer to them to have all evergreens. She had landscape designer and this is the plan that they came up with. Not as an excuse, but I can probably go back to them and some more.
Yes, we'd like that. Did we have, we did have a problem with the screened-in porch addition in the back, which is what this whole applicant was, application was about. I don't think we had a problem.
At least if I could have approval to move on that. Sort out, sort out the plantings in the front of the house and get sufficient screening AC units and the meters.
Well, I think, I think we're looking for a complete site plan, which would include the plantings. That's my opinion.
Yeah, the site plans, we we're asking as part of the site plan approval for the screened-in porch that the landscape would be included in it. Landscaping is not a site plan approval in and of itself. So we need to approve the whole thing. It's the leverage that we have to ask compliance from the homeowner to screen those pieces of equipment. So we have to do it, as Jeff said, we have to do it as one. If you can figure this out, we can hold this over to the nineteenth and then approve the porch. But we need to have the meters, the air conditioners on both sides blocked by an evergreen and it will not be seen from the street. All right. So Ryan, I make a motion to hold this over to the nineteenth?
Yes.
I will make a motion to hold this over to the nineteenth pending a final landscape design. And then we will have a problem approving the porch. We just need the landscape. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Jeff.
Michael?
Aye.
Suzanne?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
David, aye. Okay. See you on the nineteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the last thing that's on the agenda, the minutes.
What are they?
We've gone month, yes, what are they? We've gone months without minutes. We have.
So.
We have Jeff's recordings, we have the Zoom recordings. So we're sort of protected, but we need actual minutes to be voted and approved. We can vote and approve this videotape.
Okay, so I have, I've spoken with Chrissy and she is going to have something for me, fingers crossed here by Friday. And I believe she will have two to three months worth of minutes. I think that would be June through August and possibly September. So I think we will have something by the next meeting to comment on, to go through, so on and so forth.
The Zoom meetings are easy to record. The Zoom readings have perfect audio because everybody's coming from their own microphone. So we get good recordings that it should be easy to transcribe. But what is our long-term solution? Have you and Lydia worked anything out in terms of a long-term have someone to get these minutes promptly? So we used to be able to get them in two weeks between the intervening meetings. To be able to look at them and approve or make modifications and approve as modified. Is there any help? Chrissy has indicated she'll continue or she's done with this?
She will continue up until we find a solution or a replacement. So there's been various ideas such as possibly a stenographer or a transcribe company. We are looking at very large dollar signs if we go that route. I guess if we want to get real direct here and real specific, the numbers that I have seen are in the seven hundred per page range. So that is, that is from one source. That's not casting a wide net on, on all the transcribe services out there or in the area, but that is some of the dollar amount that has been communicated to me. But that's not the only avenue. There's computer software out there that can be explored and then there could be another replacement out there that could expand.
I would generate this meeting as a fifty or a hundred pages of minutes. I don't think that we want that. And just a stenographer or transcriber to type it up, it needs to have some knowledge. I mean, you, Karen, Larissa, even Chrissy has some knowledge of construction and could understand what some of these terms mean and get the meanings down clearly.
I'm sorry to say, folks, but we're not the hot ticket game in the, you know, where, you know, it's, it's not even a part-time position. It's a contractual position.
Yeah.
They're not employees of the village. It's an hourly rate basically and they're not to exceed twenty hours. So you know, the village can't pass the hat. You know? So we're gonna.
Do the trustees have the same problem? Does the mayor and trustee meetings have the same issue?
No, they have.
I don't think so. They have the village clerk who's dedicated to that, Jeff.
All right, well, I'm glad you're working on it. I know there's eleven million bacon jobs. I don't know where everybody is, sitting in front of TV eating popcorn, but all right. Let's see what happens. Anybody have any other questions, comments or been a long meeting?
Anything from the board?
Just one observation I'd like to make. Ryan sent out an email a while ago with the link to the natural resources inventory maps that were put together. And we had a presentation from Vanessa and company on that recently. And she suggested, you know, there's a lot of value in those maps. Just as an exercise, I went to I went to those maps to look and see if the floodplain was out there. I'll share my screen. Can you see this? Can you see it?
Yes.
Was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, so here, here is a, here's one of the maps, which is an aerial view that we can use anytime we want to. I put a little circle over the one seventy-eight East Market. Then I went to, put this in the back. And here's a floodplain map that's also available out there. And you see this little arc here that shows that the, that building is in the one hundred year flood area. I go back to the original one. And I kind of give it a little transparency. You can see both of them together. So just wanted to make that observation that those maps out there are, there's some pretty good maps out there that we can use for some of our own analyses.
Of course, now that the valves have been repaired since Hurricane Irene, Gary and Rick or village highway department guys opened the valves three times this summer to drain Crystal Lake to prevent it happening. So it's highly unlikely that we'll ever have a floodplain issue in the village as long as those valves continue to work and Mayor Riden had them repaired after the fact when we washed out the road into Route nine, closed Route nine for a day. So, but it's still, it's still the law. We have to get a ruling from Ken and we'll see what he says.
One thing that bothered me about this in our IMAPs is they only consider natural habitats as plants and other sorts of wildlife. The village is whited out and not labeled as a significant habitat. And I object to that. The old maps, they used to do these maps all the time and they would literally label villages as non-significant habitats. And I complained about that because I feel that the village is the most significant habitat in the town of Rhinebank in many ways because it's the human habitat. We're part of nature. We should be included on that map. And I noticed in the NRI, they just don't label us. We're just whited out, you know?
Good feedback.
So I think the drawback to that, John, was the village did not contract with Hudsonia at that time. Because I believe a lot of the maps that are being used by the NRI committee right now are the maps that were generated by Hudsonia when they redid. Uh, maps that were generated by Hudsonia when they redid the comprehensive plan. So I think if the village was not either in the contract or writing a check. Um, I think un- unfortunately, they were, they were left out.
But every part of the developed town was also left out, they were, they were considered just whited out, non-habitat and.
Correct.
I philosophically disagree with Hudsonia about that point, because I think the human habitat is part of nature and. And villages are, and go back ten thousand years and deserve some recognition, so if they want to label it, they should label it. You know, human habitat or village habitat or some other technical sounded words. So it, it's equivalent to the wetlands and the floodplains and the, you know, grasslands and whatever other habitats they want to label.
Look at the town comprehensive plan, the village is a black hole. In the middle of the town comprehensive plan, so.
I think potentially the village could take, uh, steps forward as. Uh, when and if, or I think it's in the process or it's in the works. That our own comprehensive plan co- committee is growing toes and feet and legs and other. Parts to get in the right direction.
Stay tuned for next week.
So there you go, from, right from the trustees', uh, desk right there. Um, it seems that the, the comp plan is, uh, committee is. Is doing its thing or will be doing its thing and. You know.
Talking about it next week, so.
Well, we might.
The vast wasteland on the village comp plan, we cannot recognize them.
Isn't that in a Mel Gibson movie, David?
Yeah, I can, John, I can ask Vanessa about what's going on with that sort of like village blotch, if you'd like, um. Yeah.
I, I was gonna write a memo when they asked for comments.
Oh, great, yeah, do that. Do that then, please.
All right, uh. I guess that's it, it's very late and, uh, we'll see you guys on the nineteenth, they had a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion that Jeff.
You have a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
I think we could just raise our hands, all of us in favor, aye.
Aye.
I'm to zero. Okay, guys, we'll see you on the nineteenth, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
I'm not gonna be here on the nineteen.
I, I remember that Suzanne, from you mentioning that the, the last time.
All right, great.
But thank you Suzanne, all right. It's okay. Have a good night all.